All right, great. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is Monday, April 20th. We're pleased to have Father Brian Sullivan with us from St. Benedict's Episcopal Church, 2160 Cooper Lake Road. And I invite him to give the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we've got Police Chief Joe Bennett here who will lead us in the pledge and have a visual of the flag. So Father Sullivan, if you could please lead us in prayer.
All right, let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Smyrna, spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that it was steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. It's through your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father, and thank you for joining us this evening to give us that prayer. Now we'll turn it over to Chief Bennett to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are, let's see here. Can you go, can you scroll? There we go. Item two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. I've got a few things that I want to go over with everybody. And just bear with me as I get through this and then we'll get through our rest of our light agenda. I want to first give everybody an update from the governor's press conference this afternoon. And it affects local businesses here in Smyrna. Today Governor Kemp announced that based on health data that he has at the state level that there's a flattening of the curve with COVID-19 and he's issued new orders regarding businesses and restaurants. His orders supersede anything that we would do here locally. We cannot do anything that is more restrictive or less restrictive than his orders. They are to open up barber shops, salons, gyms, bowling alleys, tattoo parlors, massage establishment, and some other indoor facilities that were closed under previous orders and those will be able to reopen on Friday as long as they adhere to safety requirements and social distancing. That's this Friday. Dine-in restaurants and theaters may reopen a week from today on Monday and safety guidelines will be forthcoming from the governor's office later this week. Churches may resume in-person services but are encouraged to exercise strict safety measures and social distancing. And bars and nightclubs remain closed. Citizens are still encouraged to shelter in place as much as possible through the end of that executive order on April 30th and will provide more specifics as they become available. I know that this has already been put on our social media, our website, and I think we've added the actual executive order language to that as of just a few minutes ago. So if you're a business here in Smyrna or a citizen with any questions, you can reference www.smyrnaga.gov or any of our social media platforms. I also want to let citizens know that we're in the middle of a budget process here. This is the time of year when we figure out the next fiscal year. The Special Committee on Budget met again last week via teleconference. And we know that the city's revenues will be significantly affected but are unsure of the total impact and for how long that will last. There's no script for this, but our staff has been incredible working with departments to project shortfalls and cut spending wherever possible for the rest of the fiscal year and recognize the uncertain times we face and be especially diligent in preparing the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. I can assure you that this council and our excellent finance staff will continue Smyrna's strong record of fiscal responsibility to get us through these tough times and make sure we're in good shape whenever this uncertain environment concludes. I also want to give an update on this city's amazing response to the call to help Smyrna's residents in need during this pandemic. The Support Smyrna program that provides grocery store gift cards and helps feed Smyrna families in need has surpassed over 1,000 individual donors and raised over $85,000. It's great to see the yard signs that contributors proudly display in their yards when they donate $25 or more. And also this weekend, a local Smyrna business called Smyrna Swag printed up t-shirts that say "Smyrna Strong" and have the www.supportsmyrna.org on the back. And they're donating all of the proceeds to the Support Smyrna effort. They ordered 100 shirts initially and printed them up and they sold within 12 hours. So that's over, it's over a thousand, well over $1,000 more donated to the effort. And I want to, I've been personally calling each beneficiary of this program and let me just tell you, these families and individuals are so thankful for what we're doing. And your donations are definitely making a difference and a huge, huge impact on our community. And then there's our Smyrna Police Department who came up on their own with a program through their community relations officers led by Lewis Defense to go up and go pick up ordered groceries from grocery stores and deliver them to our most vulnerable residents in coordination with the Smyrna Fire Department. Other cities in the state and across the country have now been taking note of what they're doing and replicating that, which just means more people across the country and across the state are being helped. I couldn't be more proud of what they're doing. And when you combine it with the $100 gift cards to the grocery stores that we're giving through the Support Smyrna program, it really is a huge impact. We also are continuing the city's partnership with the Tillman House and businesses who provide hot meals for Smyrna families. We now have three local restaurants involved, Atkins Park, Wade's, and Zuka, and are now providing 1,350 meals each week at three locations. There's 450 meals distributed each Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at Tillman House, Jockwell Park, and Chuck Camp Park. And I want to thank these businesses and all of the volunteers who are making this effort possible, especially Coach Allen Nicely for all that he's doing to make all this happen. And it's just been awesome to see this community step up and help neighbors in need and I'm so proud of the city of Smyrna and everybody here ought to be too. It's truly remarkable. With that, I'll conclude my mayoral report and we'll get through the rest of this relatively light agenda. We have no land issues, zonings, annexations. We have no privileged licenses. Formal business, we have none. Commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is the consent agenda and I'll ask Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones to read the consent agenda for council approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the March 11, 2020 Committee of the Ho meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the March 16, 2020 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the March 16, 2020 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the April 2, 2020 Committee of the Ho meeting minutes. Item E, approval of the April 7, 2020 special called meeting minutes. Item F, approval of the City of Smyrna to continue as a sub-recipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant CDGB program to receive the grant fund, the grant amount, pardon me, of $212,178.31. Authorize the mayor to sign and execute the program year 2020 sub-recipient agreement documents and all other related documents. Item G, approval to purchase two 2020 Ford Edge using emergency vehicle replacement funds, insurance funds, and monies left over from completed vehicle projects at a total cost of $56,369.92 from Wade Ford, 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia 30080. Item H, approval of the reappointment of the Downtown Development Authority, DDA members for a partial term to begin May 2020 for the following members. Ron Davis, Kevin Drawl, Jim Dumor, Larry Freeman, Kimberly Ganzimi, Diane Raisin, and Jason Saliba with Mayor Derek Norton serving as chairman. The term will expire December 31, 2020. And item I, approval of property liability insurance annual renewal with Georgia Local Government Risk Management Agency, GERMA, for $627,311 and authorize mayor to execute related documents.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. Before I ask for a motion, is there any council member who has any discussion items or anything they want to say about the consent agenda?
Hi, Mayor. Yes, I did want to talk a little bit more about the CDGB grant that we have I had talked to you earlier with, with the county and here today, but perhaps Tammy could give us a little bit more of a background about that agreement?
Ms. Sadler Jones?
Sure. So this is an annual agreement that we do with Cobb County. The City of Smyrna, we've been a sub-recipient of the CDGB program for probably over 10 years. We get annual amounts of money from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. And so we work with Cobb County CDGB's office. Anytime that we have projects, of course, they have to be CDGB eligible, meaning that they have to fit the criteria for low to moderate income. Any of our projects, which I think I mentioned on Thursday night, we normally do parks projects. We've done public works projects. We've also funded our Code Five Code Enforcement Officer, Ward Five Code Enforcement Officer. And then Mary's salary comes out of the funds too for the work that she does for the CDGB program. Specifically, three of the projects that we're looking at using the proposed funds for, for Parks and Recreation are a family restroom addition over at Wolf Center. This is primarily for the benefit of those members of the Wolf Center who may need to have some assistance in the restroom. And it requires possibly a male and female going in together. The second one is Rose Garden Parks renovations. And then the third one was a new playground equipment over at Cobb Park. It's going to be a kidscape playground specifically dedicated for those, for ADA purposes. I do know that Richard Garland, our Parks and Rec Director, is on the line. Richard, is there any other information that you want to add that I said or did not say?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to expand particularly on the Cobb Park program that we proposed there. It will be a little bit more than just a playground. Ultimately, what we're looking for there is a inclusive play area that is accessible from the kidscape playground area all the way down to the restrooms. If you've been there, you've got the kidscape playground area which has the porn place surfacing and it's a beautiful playground and it's accessible and inclusive play area. But then you also have about four or five other pods of play stations there that individually may be accessible from the parking lot, but as a whole are not accessible the way that they're connected for anyone who is challenged with mobility challenge. And what I'm proposing for that project is for us to kind of take an overall look of all of those pods and develop a plan that would interconnect all of those play areas that they would all be accessible all the way to the restroom facilities that are kind of at the bottom of the hill and are right now, for any, anyone who is wheelchair-bound, would be impossible for them to access because they're not, they don't meet the ADA standards. But do that in a way that's not just an industrial, here's the proper sidewalk, but do it in a way that is interactive and incorporates elements of play and nature as they are working their way through all of the different play pods. So that's kind of the purpose behind the CDGB project at Cobb, so that we would be able to say that it's not just the kidscape playground that is accessible, but it's that entire play area from the play area all the way down to the bathrooms is accessible and is open to all that want to play.
Thank you, Richard. Any other, any other questions or comments from the council?
I just got one, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Susan. Go ahead, please.
I was going to say thank you to Richard and also just from looking at the proposed list here, these, these are just, I believe, for the design services for these projects. So is that correct, Richard? The, this proposed list? It looks like designed for each one of those things.
That is what the RFP is for. The RFP is for the design of each one of those things. But the allocation for each one of those, based on my conversations with Tammy and based on what the CDGB office has approved, should, should be enough funds for us not only to do the design work, but for us to begin to implement those designs. The Wolf Center bathroom project, family restroom project should be design, construction, everything included in the amount that we have that CDGB has approved for that project. The Rose Garden project is really just, you know, looking at developing a redesign of that park with the basketball courts and the tennis courts being the, kind of the things that would stay in place and then looking at everything else in that park on how we could do that. So you'd have money there for design, but you'd also have money for implementation. You may not have money for complete implementation, but you'd have money at least for phase one implementation of that project. And then for the Cobb Park project, I would, I would anticipate that there would also be money there for, to get us to a point where we could begin to bid those, those, whether we choose to phase that development or whether we would have the money with the amount of money that we have allocated for that project right now. But to go as far as we'd be able to go with the money allocated with an anticipation that we may have to allocate additional funds for the Cobb project and the Rose Garden project down the road.
Okay, thank you and for explaining that and clarifying that. I appreciate it. Other things I want to ask is, does it include the, any of this at the Cobb Park include the universally accessible playground? Or are you, is it going to incorporate that too down to the restrooms?
What, what, what are you referring to when you say universally accessible playground?
I guess my understanding is that playground that area, that pot area that's right there off of the parking lot is universally accessible. And then the other playground was the old playground.
Okay, well, I am only, when I say Kidscape Village Playground, I am talking about the playground that is directly across from Campbell High School on that end of the park.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's where that-
Is that the playground that you're referring to?
Well, there, yeah, there's, that's why I think initially from my understanding that that may be why there were two separate areas. One was for children in, like universally accessible, so that it was accessible for children in wheelchairs. And that was that one that was closest to the parking lot. And then the other one was, you know, just a general playground area. But I don't know if that's going to change or-
Susan, I think you are, you are accurate. Several years ago, we did upgrade that particular playground to be a universally accessible playground. So you are correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
If I, if I could, if I could to that point, Susan, that it is the, the area that is, that has the porn place surfacing, kind of the purple and green playground, the Kidscape Village Playground, that, that portion of that upper playground area is an accessible playground area. If I, if I was bringing my child that needed and, that needed to take advantage of that, I could not access the restrooms if that was a need that I would have while I was there on a park visit. Nor would I be able to, or would my child be able to, to access any of the other play areas that are there because there, there are steps down to like four different other play areas on that side of the park. And my, my intention with this project would be for us to come out of this with a totally interconnected play area that nothing is restricted to that child that's in, that is, that may be wheelchair-bound or may have some mobility, mobility issues that would, you know, that would require them to be in a chair or to be on a walker or anything like that. So the intent is to try to create a totally inclusive play area that incorporates access to the restrooms as a part of that also. So that for the, for the mom or the dad or the grandparent that brings that child to the park to play, they don't have to just be limited to a 20 or 30-minute or 45-minute play session. And then when they need access to, access to restroom facilities, they have to go get back in their car and go somewhere else because they can't access the restrooms in the park without doing some maneuvering. Even the new restroom building that was built in Wright Field, out behind Wright Field, those restrooms are not even really accessible for anyone using that end of the park. So the, the mission here is let's at least take this portion of the park, try to come up with a design that would totally make it inclusive, but also do it in a way that is, you know, using nature and using play and having winding trails going down to the restrooms so that it's not just a, you know, a step down and kind of an institutional sidewalk that goes, you know, that does it correctly. But let's, let's do something that is, you know, kind of marries the land with the playgrounds and, and it is a way that kids can play through that. And nobody really knows that you've designed it with the, with that in mind, but you've created a fully accessible play area on that end of the park.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Tim, did you have a question as well or comment?
Just a comment and wanted to acknowledge Chief Bennett's department's decision to purchase the lower-cost vehicles in light of our current, you know, economic situation. So the police department is purchasing two Ford Edge vehicles instead of more expensive. I think there would have been Ford Explorers, I believe. But, so we appreciate that. It's going to take all of us pitching in to, to get through the next budget year, right? And appreciate Chief Bennett making, making that happen so soon.
And any other comments for, a call for a motion to approve? I have a motion. Oh, sorry, Susan. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to mention to anyone that's listening that the CDGB funds, this, and this is just approving that contract that we have every year with the county. It's not necessarily approving that list, but that list is a proposed list. And just wanted to clarify that and also talk about some of the projects that we have been able to do through the CDGB funds. Since I've been on the council, I have seen the, both of those play separate playgrounds, the universally accessible playground and the other playground, which was replaced with the CDGB funds. The, also the kids playground at the other end of Cobb Park where Bank Street is, was also used to replace, the CDGB funds were used for that park. And then another park was at the library that was funded with these funds and the pavilion and numerous projects at Rose Garden Park have been funded also since I've been, all since I've been on the council. I think there were other things prior to that. And then, and then additionally, the funds go to, to pay for the Ward Five Code Enforcement Officer. And that's really helpful for the low to moderate income areas. And I just also hope in the future, just, you know, knowing about the Parks and Rec Master Plan that there were areas in our city that identified as not having service in terms of parks or not being, having areas that didn't have access to parks without crossing a major road or just being far away. So I guess in the future, I would love to see us use some of these CDGB funds to, using those neighborhoods as well to, so that there are parks accessible to these areas that, like for example, north of Wendy Hill and west of South Cobb Drive, I know are two areas that were identified in the Parks Master Plan as a need for, for park areas. And then additionally, I believe there was some areas down more in the south part of the city.
Thank you, Susan. And I, I think it's, there's intention with the SPOSS funds that we put for our priorities in the next SPOSS with parkland acquisition and park improvements that can also be put in those areas as well. And that's certainly been talked about with the, with the council and my intention to spread it across the city. So thanks for those comments. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Wheaton, all those in favor, please vote.
They show your hands. unanimous. Thank you.
Passes 7-0. Item nine is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Lewis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to everyone. It's good to see, see the folks that are on camera here. Miss seeing y'all in person, but we're doing what we're supposed to do and do what we have to do. I hope all the residents in the city continue to stay safe and try to keep up all the efforts to do what we can to reduce the spread and make sure all of our family and friends are, are doing likewise. One thing that I definitely wanted to mention, I definitely appreciate the great summary of all the stuff that we're doing in the city. It's just truly spectacular to see how the cities come together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the good things you've been putting out there as well. I think we're, we're showing some real initiative here and showing some real passion for the community that all the residents have. I want to give a shout out as well. I know a lot of students out there, particularly the high school graduates are kind of in a weird place with not having proms and graduations and all that stuff. But I've been noticing on Campbell High Schools, they have an Instagram feed up showing all their graduates and where they're going. And it's truly impressive to see if you have some good in-state standards, Kennesaw State, UGA, Georgia Tech, which is tremendous. Hopefully I'll see some Campbell kids in some of my classes down there, but also the kids going to University of Virginia, Yale, Harvard, Michigan, and schools like that. And it just shows the excellent education that you can get there at Campbell High School. Congratulations to those graduates and all the graduates in the city and everyone that's kind of matriculating through the school system right now. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Professor Wheaton. Tim Gould, please.
Tough act to follow. Yeah, likewise. Thanks, Lewis, for mentioning that, about the graduates. It's really a great accomplishment. It's a, it's a great, great thing for a city to see so many talented kids in our, in our local school systems. So I want to just acknowledge some of the other hard work that our staff is doing. Particularly all the departments. I think they're trying to do the best they can to serve our residents in these difficult times, but to give a, point out the work that community development is doing. And that's the department, of course, that issues permits, reviews, building plans, zoning issues, things like that. What I've been told, our community development department is the only fully functional- is the only fully functional similar department of anywhere in the, in the county and maybe even in the greater, our greater area. So all the other cities have some form of restrictions around what services they can provide. But Rusty Martin and his, his group are, are open for business and doing, doing the best they can and serving, serving our residents and helping developers get their processes moving forward, building plans approved and such. So it's a, it's a great thing. They're being creative and getting their jobs done. So I want to thank, thank Rusty and his team for that as long as, as well as Tammy Sadler Jones and the rest of all the department heads and their staff and the folks working for the city. So it's, residents should be proud. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
I totally agree. We've got one of the best staffs in the business and they've done so well adapting to this ever-changing environment. Couldn't be more proud of what they're doing and how they're serving the citizens in such, in such an environment that we're in. Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you. I appreciate it. So based on the governor's announcement today, do we anticipate that our buildings will still remain closed till the end of the month? Just wanted to clarify that. Okay. And I did get that email today from Janet Lieberman, who mentioned about the recycling can be taken to West Rock on County Farm Road. And I thought that was good information until Wolf Center again. And wanted to mention that. And then also wish everyone well and hope everyone's staying safe. Thank you.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just happy to see that we're all going to return to some, some form of normal during the next couple of weeks. Thank everybody, all the citizens in, in the city for doing everything they've done. And I think that's, that goes across the state. But with that, I yield.
Mr. Travis Lindley?
Thank you, sir. And good evening to everybody. It's good to, good to see the team there on screen. Look forward to a day when we can all be back in the city, city hall together. Just a couple of things. I echo a lot of what's been said tonight about great city staff and thanks to all of our citizens for stepping up with support Smyrna. It's truly an amazing endeavor on multiple fronts. And thanks to everybody who's been part of that. Wanted to do a special shout out to Public Works. I've got a lot of very happy folks over in my, my ward with the completion of the roundabout, which has been a very long project, but proud that they finished up early. And just by way of background from our Committee of the Whole Meeting on last Thursday, making great progress with our traffic calming efforts in the city. Thank the Chief, Chief Bennett for all of his work as we look to provide some relief for the various traffic issues in some of our neighborhoods as folks are complaining about some possible dangers. So working hard on that and look forward to seeing everybody in person soon. Thank you.
Mr. Austin Wagner?
Yeah, I definitely want to reiterate and echo a lot of what has been said about how the staff has handled all this. I think it's been incredible to see what our city's been able to do. But I also, I think myself, like many others, are maybe a little surprised with the governor's order today, opening us up, some of the things up as early as we are. And I just want to encourage everyone to stay safe and stay healthy out there. Just because the governor has decided that we're opening up some, some of these pieces of the economy back up doesn't mean that you get to wave the magic wand and this disease is just gone. Be smart. These openings don't mean that we should reduce social distancing, that we shouldn't be, continue to be diligent about how we're responding and how we're reacting to what's happening out there. There's a risk that we're going to have a further increase. So just, yeah, just be smart, be safe, keep social distancing and be smart when some of these things open back up. And that's all I have.
Mr. Glenn Pickens?
I'm just continuing to be encouraged with the Smarter Strong Initiative and just seeing all the signs popping up around everywhere. And just shout out to one of my neighbors for the Smarter Strong shirts that just got sold out this week. And just, and excited to be back together again in person one day soon.
Don't worry if you didn't get your shirt. They're going to be, they're going to be printing more. So stay tuned for the next available, available offering. Ms. Sadler Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also say thank you to you and the council for your leadership and support during the COVID-19. I know I appreciate your support and I know that the staff does too. So thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Cochran?
After all that, I've got nothing to report.
Okay. Ms. Heather?
I'm good, sir. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll, Heather, I'll turn it over to you to manage the citizen input portion. And this is where if you are a citizen and have comment, please make sure to state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes. And Ms. Heather, I'll turn it to you to manage that process.
Okay. This is our citizen input section. You have three minutes to speak. I have unmuted the two callers. If you are one of the other participants here and not part of the staff, you will just need to unmute yourself, give us your name and your address so that we can record that for the record. And then we'll start the clock and you'll be able to speak. If anyone would like to go first?
Does anybody wish to provide public comment? All right. Hearing none. I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:38 PM. Stay safe, everybody. Thank you so much.